Today what does the word does? What can we do with the word of God? What can the word of God do to a man? What is the power of his word? This is what we are going to meditate today. Kathodiyaya parisutha namathukumai mundaavada. Glory be to the holy name of God. Yes I have taken the verse in the book of 55 verses 10 and 11. Maariyum uraintha maariyum vaanathalindhi erangi abaduthu kudirumbamal bhoomiyeyi nannithu adil mulai kilambi velayum madhiseyidu vidayakaranukkividayyum pusikkiranukka aavara team kodukruthu yedpadiyum appadiyaen vaailandupurappudan vasnumi irukku adu verumayaa indukkutirumbamal adu naan virumirudasayidu naanadha anipina kariyamagamudivaikum. Kathodiyaya parisutha namathukumai mundaavada. Glory be to the holy name of the Lord. Maariyum uraintha maariyum vaanathalindhi erangi varugaradu. The rain and the clouds are coming towards from heaven. Maariyum uraintha maariyum vaanathalindhi erangi varugaradu. The rain and the snow from heaven comes from heaven. Adu tirumbaa aveedathukkutirumbamal bhoomiyeyi nannithu oru payirai undakkugaradu. It turns not to the place from it came from but it make its fruit on the earth. Adu vidayayyum pusikkiranukka aavara team kodukkaradu. It brings forth the bud to the sower and it give bread to the eater. Adu bolave ennudeva sanamukuda adu naan anipina kariyatthi seyyidu utta than ennadathle tirimbi varumindru aandavare cholugaradu. Even so the word shall go out from my mouth and return unto me without void but accomplish the work. Kathodiyaya parisutha namathukumai mundaavada. Glory be to the holy name of the Lord. Today what does the word does? What can we do with the word of God? What can the word of God do to a man? What is the power of his word? This is what we are going to meditate today. We find many lots of verses in the word of God. Palavidamana saabamana vasanangal unda aasirvadamana vasanangal unda. We find verses of cursing and the verses of blessing. Palatharappatta vasanangal namukkirundhalum namukkutheyana vasanangalai namukkae eduthukulukaram. Although we have in verses plenty we take the verses which are acceptable to ourselves. Namudhey valkikeye etta vasanangal namukke adigamaga padikum. We like the verses very much which are according to our life. Andha vasanangalai naam namukkae elidi vaitukulukaram namadhey biblella oru vaakkutatham pola vaitukulukaram innupala vidangalile andha vasanangalai churithu naam pesukaram. We write those verses and keep, we write them as promises and keep in the word of God like that we hold on to the word. Indha vasanam aanadu devanathalindhu vara kudiyae oru vaartey. This word is the word proceeding from the mouth of God. Overu nookathodu than overu vasanamum anupappadukaradu. Every word is sent with a purpose. Orayee vasanam orayenirathle overu vidamai overuvarukullum adu anupappadukaradu. One word at the same time is sent differently into different people. Andha vasanam andha manidhanudiyae valkikeye enna thayavayo adai seyyidu utta than kattarathle tirimbi pooh. Whatever is needful for the man in his life that word will do its work and then return to God. En vaailandhi purappudan vasanam adu verumayaa ennadathukkutirimbi varade. The word which proceeded from my mouth it shall not return to me void. Adu devanakeen naan virumbugaradu seyyidu than anipina kariyatthi mudittu utta than adu tirumbaa varum. But it will accomplish that which I please and shall prosper in the thing wherein do I sent it. Arubianavale ongelde valkiela kodha chella vasanangalai kattar anipiruppar. Even in your life the Lord would have sent some verses. Chilla vasanangal namukke remba adigamaga namitthotturukku. Some verses would have touched us to a great extent. Vasanathke churithu adigamaga pesinadu thaaviidu than. Most times a day it spoke about this words. Avant cholugaradu chella vasanangal enne nambappuninavaasanangalindhu cholugaradu. Some verses he says that it made him to believe. 1994 verse 41 neer enne nambappuninavaasanam enndre avant cholugaradu. 119, 149 verse he says that the word which thou madest me to believe. In the sovergalile chelladangalile vasanangalai elidi podukaradu. Some of them write the verses and keep. Chilla vasanangalai naam promise cardindhu adithukodukaram. Some of the verses we printed on the promise card. Chilla vasanangal in the tractle adichikodukaram. Some verses we write on the tracks and give. Avigalallam overuvarudupesakudiyavartegal. These are the words which speak to everyone. Noringipona manidhanukke chella vaartegal kereikumanaal avundhey valkai katti elippappadukaradu. For a broken man if verse is given to him his life is built up. Indhake naam jeevanoodu iruppadu indha vasanaththi nambithaan. Today we are alive by this word alone. Porattangal mattila oru devanade pilla eppri nindruvundru karadu. In the midst of struggles how does a man of God strive? How is he able to stand? Indha vasanaththi nambithaan avan nisiradu kattarindha vasanathinbadi enakukriyay chayivar engara nichyathil than avan kathukondrakaradu. He is trusting in this words and he is believing on it that the Lord will do according to it. Ongelde valkiela anupappatta vasanangalallam adu thanudevaile seyyidu utta da. The words that the Lord has sent you to you in your life does it does the work which is sent for? Just think and see. Ongelodu chella vasanangal polama kattar pesirukaradu. Does the Lord speak to you through the verses? Have you got any verse? Porattangal mattila kattarusela vaastavaartegal ongelodu edebutukaradu. In the midst of problems has the Lord dealt you with any word? Andha vasanathudiyekriyay ongelde valkiela nadebutukaradu. Have you seen the works of that words in your life? Enakorusagovrenthi teriyum. I know of a brother. Andha sagorun 200 rupees samplatle avar kastappadukondrundhar. He was suffering with a salary of 780 rupees. Remba kastappadhar. He was in great poverty. But in the midst of this the Lord spoke to him. Sagala janangalai parkillum onne kirtiyum pulchimaga vai penn. I will make you a praise above all the people of the earth. 200 rupees sampla vangitrukaramanushanukke kattodi vaartae ebbirudhe naan onne sagala janangalai parkillum onne aaramathuva kirtiyum pulchimai vai pennnu oru vaartae kereikaradu. For the person who was earning a low salary the Lord promised him that he will make him a praise to all the people. Avar irundhey veeetle andha roadla cycleukkoodu urittitu poomidiyada. Avlo chinnasandhal. In the streets that he was in he could not even drive a cycle with such a passage it was. Avlo chinnasandhalirukramanushanukke parathallindhu oru vaathavornal sopanudliyudarshunutliyekkare. Enavarda sagala janangalai parkillan naan onne ebbiruvakepoogaray kirtiyum pulchimai vai penn. For a person who is in such a standard the Lord promised him saying I will make you a praise above all the people of this earth. Oru companylla oru agentaga valaseyikaradu. He is working in a company. Oru companylla agentaga avar po angappu overuvarle vassulpanittuvarra valay. He was given a work of an agent in a company to gather money. Ibrithanavare valaseyidukondrundhar. He was like this working. Madala orderaduthu varno trippi aduk supply pannano trippi po adu vassulpanittu varno. Firstly he has to take the orders then go and supply and then collect the money. Ibrithanavare valkiipoyukondrundhar. This is how his life is going on. But what did the Lord do? One day the Lord promised him this. After he got this verse valkai apriyae maathappadukaradu. There was a change in his life. Enadhal indha vasanam than anipina valayenisayikaradu chayiarambikaradu. Because this verse is sent to do the work which is sent for. Oru sadhana vedayae manukulla porro adu namaduparu thondi idilapakaradu le adu namannoodu eerathle makiipoyudukaradu. We plant a seed and we are not seeing what is happening to it but it is going getting along and it is vanishing away in the soil. But from that seed which is withered another branch is spreading out. Adu bolave than indha vasanam anupappatal ondru millaadu pola thondrum annal adu ornal mulai karamikum kriyaseyiarambikum. Like this the word when it is sent it does seem like it is nothing but one day it will do its work. After he got this verse Ornal namabiriyapastra avar kuuparadu. One day a big pastor called him. Niipriyavalesinjettukavanta niye orderaduthu niye supply panni niethaniyadu chayin choli konja kas kodukaradu. You should not do this work anymore but hereafter you will have to take your orders by yourself and do this business thing so he gave him some money. Ippa companykaa orderadukame ippa thanakaadu aradukaradu thana supply pandraradu thana poenisiradu vassulpantradu. Now he did not ask the orders for the company but he placed the orders for himself and supplied them and gathered the money. Orayemmasathle adigamana panankkadaikadu. In one month itself he gained a lot. Konjanalai var thaniyadu businessaitorangidhar. After some days he started his own business. Konjanal orderaduthu shanjitru vera companylla koduthu adichikidichilant share party panni supply pandnavare konjanallem machinegalvanga arambitadu. For some days he was giving his orders to from other companies and he was doing his business but then he got his own machine. When I went to that company When I went transferred to that place I visited his company And there was a verse there. Only one verse. What was it? Sagala janangalai parkillum onne kirtiyum pulchimai vai pennugaradu andha companylla mainirathle maatiyusins. In that main portion of that company it was hung this verse I will make you a praise above all the people of this earth. See how it is? Indha oru vasanamotte elidi podukke varu one me illena idu than ennoda pesinavartey. In this verse is there and nothing else means this is the verse which was spoken to me. Andha vaartae enninesinjettuke enne kirtiyum pulchimai vettikundevare. And this verse is making me a praise above all the people. Indhake koodikana kannavu oru sondakarag kattarmaachirukaradu. Now he is made, the Lord has made him an owner of many crows today. Have any of you got this verse? Andha vasanam ongelde kattachirchinna andha vasanaththi ningayee jeeva vasanaththi nisino iruga pitichikunna. If you have got this verse then you will have to hold on this verse as a living word. Philippiya 2:24 Jeeva vasanaththi pitittukondu sudarkalipola ningal prakasikkiranninngal endu cholla padukaradu. In Philippiya 2nd chapter it is said that you who are holding on to the living word, the living word of God. Oru devanade pilla jeeva vasanaththi pitittukolavendam. A child of God should hold on to the living word. Appidi ningal pitittukonda ningal sudarkalipola prakasikkala. If so you can shine out like dust. Kathodiyaya parisutha namathukumai mundaavada. Glory be to the holy name of the Lord. Indha vasanathukku alivee kadaayadu. There is no limits for this verse. Indha ulagathle kaankaradu allam alindu pooh. Whatever you see on this earth will perish. But there is no perishing thing for this verse. Indha vasanaththi pettavurul alindu pogalam annal indha vasanam oru bodo malivee sandikadu. But those who have seen this verse will go away but the verse will never fail. Ongelde indha vasanathudiyesayalai indhake ningal sariyanavathle velengikondu ongelde visuvasaththi ningal katti elippavendam. You will have to know the right works of this verse and you will have to build up your lives. Modalampeethu modalamadikaray 23 indha vasanathukku payar ali vilada vithth endu cholla padukaradu. 1 Peter 1:23 we see that this is the incorruptible word of God. Adukka alivee kadaayadu. It has no corruption at all. Manushanakkularekkaradana jeeingalukke ebbri alivukkadaayado athumavukka alivukkadaayado adu pola indha vasanangalukum alivukkadaayadu. As the life and soul is incorruptible in man so is the word is also incorruptible. Indha ali vilada vithth oru manidhanay ali viladaavani martukaradu. This incorruptible seed is making man also incorruptible. Adanala modalamkoorinderu pandinamadikarathle parkumadu ali vilaadhaa gaidu aliyaamayai pettukollukaradu endu namadhey sariraththi churithi choliyukaradu. Therefore in 1 Corinthians 15 we see that this corruptible is must put on incorruption. Eppidi manananda sariram ali vilada aliyaamayai pettukollamudiyum? How does this earthly body put on incorruptible body? Indha vasanandhan adha sariraththi aliyaamayu vilaadu maathikundey varugaradu. It is this word that is making this body incorruptible. Indha vasanathudiyesayalgal chilla kariyangalai naan ongelukku mubaga vayikaradu. I keep the works of this word before you. Indha vasanathudiyay mukkiyamana yen namakkulayindhunvasanaavate devan anupukaradu. Why does the Lord send this verse in us? Jacob 1:18 Abharsitthangundu tamdisusthikale naam mudarpalanavathirukku namme satthiyavasannithanale janipithaar. Nam sisthikalil mudarpalanai marumudiyaga kattar vasanaththi namakkule anipitharunna. He sent this word of truth that we should be the kind of first fruits of his creatures. Indha vasanathudiyay mukkiyamana sayal oru dev sadhana mananamanushanay avanay sabile mudarpalanai martuvade. The important work of this word is for an ordinary man to make him the first fruits of his creatures. Indha sabile naam oru visuvasigalai uuliralai maruvadu mukkiyamala. It is not an important thing that we become a believer or a work of the church. Indha sabile naam mudarpalangalai maravendu avasyam. It is needful that we become the first fruits of this church. Oru manidhan sabile mudarpalanai marunal avandhananadha sabike thoonasirupan. If a man becomes the first fruits of this church he will become the pillar of the church. Indha sabike namilathene var thungalayukaradu. How many of us are pillars of this church? Indha sabile visuvasathle ethane var nindruvundru karadu. How many of us are standing in faith in this church? Iduvari pradushtey kathukondavare ethane var? How many of you have kept your consecration? Kristvinanbevittu priyamal nindruvundru karulay ethane var? How many of them are not departing from the love of Christ? Indha vasanathudiyay satthiyavasanathudiyay valay enna terima oru manidhanay sisthikalil mudarpalangalai martuvade. The work of the word of truth is to make any man as the first fruits of his creatures. Allah manidhanukka vasanaththi kattarkudukkaradu. For all of them the word is given. Annal ellarum mudarpalangalai tangle maathikulukaradu. But all made as the first fruits. Vasanaththaniyapriyekatchpananu. You should hold on to the word of God just like it. Vasanaththa ningavandhu ongelde valkiela anubomai maathanu. You should make the word as a practice in your life. Vasanam ongelukkule aaluvasayi edangudukavendam. You should allow the word of God to reign in your life. Adu ongelde vallvai mudarpalanai maathum. It will change your life as the first fruit. Aandhodhey vaartavandhu sisthiku kudiyasakti vilaadu. The word of God has the part to create. Ulagangal undagakadavadu endu chunnar andha vaarteenala ulagangal undanavadu. When the Lord said the earth shall be made and the world was created. Andha sisthikum tanmayay namakkulakondurumudhu naam sisthikalil mudarpalanai maruvaram. When we bring in the character of formation in us then we are becoming the first fruits of the creatures. Nyanasurathle visuvasigal thayavayala visuvasigalilla mudarpalangaladu namukkutthayavay. We do not want the believers of Nazareth but we want the first fruits of the believers. Andha mudarpalangalilla mudarpalangal uulirugalindhu alaikepadukaradu. The first fruits of the first fruits are called the servants of God. Appo mudarpalan irunna than sabile enna undagum mudarpalangalile edukumudiyam mudarpalanay edukumudiyam. Only when there are first fruits in the church there will be first fruits of the first fruits. Appo oru sabile uuliruthukkaaal varala abdiyina andha sabile mudarpalan illa irunda adlu oru mudarpalanay kattar nisinjiruppari vediye kondu vandhu kanvithiruppar. If there is no first fruit in the church then there will be no servant of God which is rising if so there will be the servant of God coming out from the church. Matthabidi naam sabile oru visuvasigal kootangala agairukkaro. Or we will be only a group of believers. Namudhey mudarpalanudiyay andha velay namakkulayinnum andha vasanathinpolamai nadevaravillay. We don't have the experience of first fruit by this word in us. Undre onne mudarpalanai maathuvade indha vasanathudiyay valay agarukaradu. Firstly this word is making you to be a first fruit. Adutthaga yaakobu modalamadikarathle parkumadu. Nextly in James 1st chapter. 21 Indha vasanathukke adutthavayenenna ongelathumavi rachikavallamayuvlade. This word is able to save your soul. Undre onne mudarpalanai maathuvade. Firstly it is making you a first fruit. Yaakobu 21 Aaviyal ningal ellavidaarukayum kodiyathurukunathim olithivittu ongelulathil naattappadadaayum ongelathumakal rachikavallamayuvladaayum merukira vasanaththi santhamae yechukulindhal. Indha vasanathudiyay valay ongeladhatthumavi rachikakudiyade. The work of this word is to save your soul. Oru manidhanudiyathumarachipu than mikum mukkiyamanaadu. The man's soul to be saved is most important work. Indha sabike kulla varumudhu oru valay ongelke sariyadachipukkadaichirukku edathu soganadaichirukku widhala kadaichirukku oru nimmati kadaichirukku anna athumarachipu envadu than visuvasathin mudivu enbadi naam velengikolavendam. You might have, when you came to this church you might have had salvation for your body some healing for your body or some goodness in your experience of your body but the most important is the salvation of your soul. Oru devanude manushanudiyay athumarachipu than vilayerepatradu. The salvation of the soul is most important man of God. Indha vasanathudiyay oru purunamana valay varumudhu namakkulay athumarachikapadukaradu. When the perfect work of this word comes in us then our soul is saved. Athumarachipu namakkulay nadevarukaradu endu ebbri kandupidikumudiyam. How do we find out that our soul is saved? Ongelde jeevithle kodiyathurukunangalallam marikundeyavaru. All the bad characters in your life will be changed. Ongelde jeevithulalanda aalukkala onne ottin ningikundeyavaru. All the filth in your life will be removed. Nalla purunjikolavendam ningal. You should understand this well. Ningal ellavida aalukkayum kodiyathurukunathim olithivittu endu choliyukaradu. The evil natures and the filth which is in you you should put out. Indha aalukke endhal ennam. What is this filthiness? Oru tirukadrisi enna cholugaradu. What does the prophet say about this? Yengalde needigalallam aalukkana kandeygal. All our righteousness are as filthy rats. Indha vasanaththi namakkulakondurumudhu indha vasanam namudhey suyaneediyay odaitukadukaradu. When being bring this verse in us this verse is breaking our self-righteousness. Namakunno overthru oru principle oru policy vichirukaradu. We all have a principle and policy for us. Naipidutha iruppar. I will be like this only. Naipidutha pesuvan. I will speak like this. You cannot change me. Naipiditha iruppar niipiditha irunna po abidila namapesuva. I will be like this if you be like this you be or go away. Idu all suyaneedigal. These are all self-righteousness. Indha suyaneediyay veden cholugaradu aalukkana kandeygal endu cholugaradu. This self-righteousness the word of God speaks as a filthiness. Indha aalukke ni nikavendu avasyam. It is needed for you to remove these filthiness. Indha aalukke nisiyonne ottu suyaththakattar odakkaradu than indha vasanathudiyay valay. Only when this word comes into you this righteousness or the self-righteousness is broken. Indha vasanathukku ongelde valkiela edanguduthu ningal palaginigana ongelde jeevithulalagare kodiyathurukunaththi kattar maathikundeyavaru. When we give room for the word of God to work in you then the Lord is making you to get out of your naughtiness. Undre sabile onne mudarpalanai uruvakuvade. First thing is making you as first fruit in the church. Erindavudhu ongelde jeevithulalanda aalukkayum thurukunathim olithivittu ongelde athumavay indha vasanam rachikaradu. Secondly removing all the filthiness and naughtiness in your life and saving your soul. Thirdly. Eberayirkalidhanirupam modalamadikaram 3 Hebrews 1:3 What is it told here? Ivare avudi makimain prakashamum avudi tanmain sorumai irundhum sarvathim tamdi vallamuyilla vasanathinale thanguguray tammalay thaming nam Tamudhey vallamuyilla vasanathinale nisikaradu thangugaradu. He is upholding all things by the word of his power. Indha vasanam onne thanga aramikam. This word will may hold you. Porattangal mattila. In the midst of your troubles. Ongelde tadumathangal mattila. In the midst of your tribulations. Ne asaykappadukudiyakalamalile. At the times when you are shaken. Nelainirukkamudiyamal tadumaargaranerangalile. At the times when you are staggering without able to stand. Oru vasanam kadaichidana onne adapriyathangi vidam. If one word is given to you then it will hold you like that. Alavatanthi tirukadrisigalallam ningathirukadrisanththa korakthunnerathle korakthana vaartey korakthapesanu andharathle. That is what the prophecies has to speak the right word at the right time in the right place. Andha karakthi sariyana vasanaththa ni sariyana nerathle pesanu. You'll have to speak the right word in the right place. Elai padindavanukke samayathukketa vaartey solle kattar enakkalvimaninavai tandarlinar. The Lord has given me the word of the learned that I must speak to the very soul. Korakthana vaartey andharathle nerathle ningal chollanu. You can speak the right word to him. Andha vasanam ningal oru vaartey sariyasolitiyena andha vaartey oru manishanthi valkayavapri maathivudam. If you speak the right word at the right time then it will change the whole life. Indha vasanam vandhu tadumaargaramanidhanay vaanangalayay bhoomigalayay ellavatthi thangukudiyasakti vilaadu. This word is able to hold all the heavens and the earth and is able to hold the man. Namudhey vallamuyilla vasanathinale sagalatiyavare nisikaradu thanguradu unne thangamattara. By his powerful word he is holding everything will he not uphold you? Ongelde prachinilla onne thangitsumundu endi konduramattara. In your problems will he not uphold you and carry you along? Aandhodhey vasanathukka avlo sattileya. Does the word of God have no power for him? Devanude vasanaththi ni visuvasithal andha vasanam onne thangisumundukundey bohum. If you believe in the word of God the word will keep him on upholding you and carrying you. Chella tirukadrisanangalallam odainduvana manushanapidit nippati. Some prophecies have made man stable when he is broken. Oru chella vaartegal chella vasanangalallam apriyae directa pesuva. Certain verses speak to you directly. Chella vasanangal oru manidhanay apriyay aarthal paditivudam. Certain verses will comfort a man like that. Chella vasanangal oru manushanapriyain norriki votachi avan apriyay silvi pakunkunduvi ukaravacharadu. Certain verses will make him to be broken and make him to a lower state. Da varutha padu baransumukkariyendu chollangala andha vasanam yeblo verude life ennijiruke touchpuneer. This verse which we say come unto me only that labor and heavy labor has touched many of them. Hospitalle innanithanam nerle chethupiruva abdiyin choli naangatreatmentay kodukamattu unnu oru manushanapadukostan. In a hospital they made one man to lie saying that he is going to die in a few hours and therefore will not give him treatment. Avakattuva. He will shout. Annal avan vandhu onne me treatpanukudukamattanga onne me chayamattanga. But they will Idam udiyaporaane enna time konjanathle settruva settruva. Ippriyae avan oruhi danga. But they will give him no treatment because he is going to die in a few hours. This think and see how it is. Andha vedanilla kattumbode andha nurse vandhu padhdiyara kattaranpa. Idupoyinavabo koinarakatiipuavam abdiyin puyidu. When he is shouting in pain that nurse will come and see and say he is going to pass away in some time and therefore let him go. Madhre jeevachilanandha sambhava. It's a thing which happened in his life. This happened in Madhre GH. See what happens? Ibrithirukumbode oru al vandhu oru tract koduthurupanadu. At this time a person came and gave him a tract. Ennadathil vaarangal naan ongelukke elai paradel taruvay. Come unto me and I will give you rest. Indha vasanaththa andha patikata alukke padchikatna onne avunukka indha vasanathinmala oru periyen nambikumdaich. When this verse was read to that person he had a great hope on this verse. Abdiyina indha vasanam undujuna enakkelai paradel vayanun keta. If this verse is true then I should have rest. Avunga pillengavandhu pakkavandhu onne indha doctor nurse laan chonaanga ningal saavukelathi ennesinjirunga sondakarangalukke cholirunga pettikilallan ellan readypanirunga ithanamani kula erandruvarnu chollanu. His children and relatives came the doctors said that you can make arrangement for his funeral and for the boxes that he is going to die in a few hours. Avunga pillengalallam vittlu po ellan readypani pandhalallam pottanu. And his children went and made ready for the pandhal and all. Annal ipinga vasanam enneseyidu valaseyaravikidu. But now is the verse beginning to work in him. Avana yesuva thiyadharavikaradu. He is working, in him is working the verse. Ivana vasana, ivana kivunukulla andha valay seyyidu ivana ipad devanaththi thiyadharavikaradu. In him the word started to work and he is starting to seek God. Ippa aandhavaru indha vasanamo ivanodu valkiodu nisayi aramichirche sayilbada porada aramikaradu. Now God and the verse is totally striving with him. Konjanathle aandhodhey vallamay andha sarirathle avun onarukaradu. After some time he began to feel the power of God. Ippanda vali illa. Now he has no pain. Andha vedanayilla. In the bits of his pain. Ippu konjamajama andhu widhulaiyavunar aramikaradu. He began to see the deliverance in himself. Ippoladu oru purunavidhulaiyavandha padukiliyavunar aramita. In that sick bed he started to see the perfect deliverance. Ippaduttha bayavandricha. Now the next fear came. Ippu indha doctorsa pathu ennatiyam marundukudukondruvanganu oru bayavandricha. He feared lest the doctors will give him some medicine and make him to die. Naam kattaradu nalal naam kuuparadu nalal edathu panniruvangalunu ivanukke bayavandricha. Because he is shouting and crying out he feared that the doctors will kill him. Andha tract motte kaila irukke. He had the tract in his hand. Bayangayilla ellar poitam petti readypanadu. His sons also went to make ready for the box. Ippenamandradu. Now what to do? Ippa aandhodhey pesna aandhodhey venthey pesaradu vasanam marubidi 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 pessi 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 ippu purunasurukkadi chich. Now he is speaking to God and God is speaking to him and the verse is speaking to him and he had perfect deliverance. Ippakale vandhu checkpanna vyadiyirukkaadu eppidi namasethupiruva chunnava eppidi uyirudan vandhutan choli ivangal edathu panniruvanga avanakkayadu chakkapurukka adu thun choliyavangal choliite appidiyey endhiji jeevachivutu night one nighta veliyavanta. In the morning when the doctors come to check him if they find him living then they will kill him with some medicine thinking so then he got out of the GH himself. Kaila kasukadaayadu. He had no money in his hand. Veliyavandhu oru altav pictureadu mari konja kasvagana. He went to beg from outside to a man. Navu urukubonun chonna avangeedho konja kas koduthanga. He wanted to go to his native place and there came some money. Adi galayla thaan sondavuraki usalamati vishanja. Early in the morning he went and landed in Uslemati's own town. Uruku vishantha angela enavodinirukanga pandhal poditirukaga. When he went to his place he saw, found them making, putting the pandhal. Karashila battha ivaru uyiruda andharathle pinninna. Finally he went alive to that place. Oru conventionla ipriyachakcholranda. In one convention a person testified like this. Touchpanadu ennedu? What touched him? Endha pastor jebikile? No pastor prayed for him. Periyaprasiddipathungalallam kai vekile? No great monition people came and touched their hands. Endhasabayarumboya avanakaanisila prayer pannala? No people of the church went to pray for him. Indha varutha padu baranandha vasanam enneseyidu thanudevaile seyyaravikidu. The verse which is sent here is working for him. Anavindhalindha vasanam onne thanggo. Therefore this verse will hold you. Ne tadumaran nerathle kattadu vasanaththi noogie pathina andha vasanam onne nisiyav thangaramchiro. At the time when you are staggering if you look unto this verse this verse will uphold you. Namudhey kankalukkintha thangum sakthi thiriyadu annal naam thangi endi sumukka paduvarukaradu. With our eyes we cannot see this holding part of this word but we have been held and we have been carried by this verse. Naallan chella tirukadrisanangalallada naan teatrapadukaradu. I have been comforted by many prophecies alone. Oliyangalle chella prachinana nerathle chella vaartegal kadaikun chella tirukadrisanangal adu than namala standmanavikum chella andha vasanandha andha vaartay oru manidhanay apriyennipatiyuchu. At the times of great difficulties of my ministries the word of God made me to stand like that. Ithana varshaache ongelke indha vasanathudiyay andha anubomulayiruka? Have you part of this word in your life? Kattadu vaartey ongelodu pesukarada ongelay thangukarada? Is the word of God speaking to you is upholding you? Aandhodhey vaartey kadaichirchinna adu ningay pitichitingana ningal ongelke adhistakaranamari. If you receive the word of God if you hold on to it you are lucky people. Indha vasanam andrichinna ni velavayamattai. If you get this verse you will never fall. Aandhodhey vasanam ongelde valkiela edebutaramichichina ni ongelukke velukiyekkada enanda ni velundhalai engadavuluva? Avurudhey kaila davundukideeruka. If this word of God comes and touches you if you hold on to this word then you will have no fall because even if you fall you are in his hands. Velundhalai engadavundukideeruka? Andha thangum karathle thani velukaradu thiripu onyastandmanivudaradu thiripidi tadumarana engadavuluva? Kattadu kaila enanda avanada onythangikundeyavaru. Even if you fall then you will be falling in his hands again he will make you to stand because you are falling in his hands and he is holding you. Anavindhalala indha vasanam onne thanga kodiyade adu onenilainiruthakodiyade. This word is therefore able to uphold you and make you stabilization him. 1994 verse 41 119, 105 verse when you read. Indha vasanam kaalkalukkutheepamagarekaradu un paadake adu velichamagarekaradu. This verse is a lamp unto the feet and the light unto the path. Idu ongelde vasan ongelde valkiela vilaayi This word changes life, light into darkness into light. Hundred and nineteen some hundred and fifth verse. At the times of darkness, this is a word which gives us light. By this light we cross through the path. In Job ninety twenty nine verse three. When his candle shined upon my head. And by his light I walked through darkness. What is this? By his light I walked through darkness. What is the light given to him? That is the word of God. Only when you receive this word then in the bits of darkness you begin to walk through it. When our paths are become dark to us. When we have no strength to take the next step ahead. When we do not know if we are keeping our paths right or not. When we think as to how our path would be here after. We should have to cling on to the word of God. Has the word of God spoken to you? When you read the word of God, what you get, that is not what I say. When you read the word of God, all the words which are favorable to you are favorable to us. When you say you are blessed, that verse you will note it. At the time of sickness, I will heal you, that verse you will note it down. I don't say about this. At the time when you stand on your knees, the word from heaven should come out to you. When that word proceeds from heaven to you, only then in your darkness it will show you the light. At the time when you do not know your path, it will become a light to your path. That verse will keep on coming in your mind. One word is sufficient for us to live all the days of our life. There is no necessity for many verses. One verse is sufficient to use in all angles of life. If you have only one verse, then you can say that the Lord has promised you, you have promised me and go on and to your glory. And to Abraham the Lord promised that I will give you a son. At any problem he will say the Lord has promised like this and you have not given me, quoting this verse he will pray. Finally this promise came to pass and finally the kings appear from his generation and still it's existing today. If you hold on to this verse, then in the path of your darkness it will come as a light to your path. In the life of Job there was a time of darkness to him. All his children were dead. And his wife asked him to die. And his friends counseled him. And they judged him. All of them departed from him. At this time he is saying by the light that he has shined upon me, I walk through darkness. That light is the word of God. If you receive the word of God then in your life you can go very steadily. I had a great problem in my ministry. I could not share that. Because I do not know the reality of it. I did not know through whom it came. For what I didn't know. I did not know who is behind this. But the problem was going to its heights. I used to receive many phone calls through the cell or through the landline. But I don't know who it is. If I speak back to that number, they will say it is a booth or it is switched off. But it was over torture to me. I could not bear it at all. Finally it went to the pastor's level. There too, only invisibly people are coming and the original people is not coming, their only phone calls are coming. And the pastor called me and asked. He asked me what was the problem. I did not even know what the problem was. If the problem is by whom and what is the reason, if you do not know how it will be. A lot of tribulations in my mind. Whatever I am doing, it will keep on telling. If I am standing in a convention, immediately he will say over the phone, see what I am going to do, you are standing in this place. It was such a confusion. I really wanted to see him somewhere. One spirit came to strive with me saying. Even I started to seek him at high speed. Until now I was not able to find him, then the Lord said that that which is hidden is for me. At this time I became a pastor. And the first all India pastors meeting was held, I went there. I was striving with the Lord for the first meeting itself. After I came from the meeting, I again got the phone. I went for the second meeting. I did not have any rest at all. At the ten o'clock the meeting was over, ten thirty he came over the phone. Suddenly there will be a gent's voice or a lady's voice. Taking the phone, somebody will speak. I did not know what to do. Now I am going to come to see. Then I went and stood in the early gate to see who it is. And totally upset I went for the third meeting. For some time I prayed for myself, got filled in the spirit and again the problem came into me. Then I silently sat in the meeting. As soon as I sat down. One pastor who was a Kerala pastor was seated on the second row, he is going to prophesy. I was newly appointed a pastor and therefore I was sitting on the tenth line on the side. As soon as I kept silent, he began to prophecy in a great high speed. When he began to prophesy, the Lord said, now I am going to speak to you. The Lord said, you are now seated, now this prophecy is coming, I am speaking to you. And that prophecy went into my mind. He spoke in Malayalam very strongly. I have called you. I only have called you. How will I give you into the hands of men? He is a pastor in Kerala and the words came rightly. And the words proceeded like this, I have called you. I will never allow you to hand over into the hands of men, why are you worried about this? Saying two or three words, this prophecy was stopped. I cried for ten minutes when this word came to me. After the meeting, that phone was not there, even if the phone should come, that person, defeated man has spoke to me and it just went off. There is life in the word of God and it drinks light in the darkness. In hundred and nineteen some hundred and thirtieth verse when we see. The words give with understanding and to the simple. Simple means it shows many meanings for it. In Isaiah we see that it is told as fools are here to simple. Even though fools they will not err. Even if one person is without any wisdom or understanding or any knowledge or learning, the Lord by his word gives them understanding and makes them more powerful and full of wisdom. All those who were so fools, when they came to this religion have been made powerful and they work miraculously today. This Sunday one person testified he is known to all. Sunday he testified that he went to heaven and came, he only studied second standard. But the word of God has made him a wise person. Therefore you should not say that you have no knowledge or wisdom, if you give room for this word, it will change your lifestyle. Although you be a fool, even if you give room for this word, it will make you wise and make you go to the shore. What did Saint Peter learn? What is spoke about Jesus? He is an unlearned person. But you know how that he spoke about the book of Isaiah? On the day of Pentecost when Saint Peter preached a very short message, how many people were saved? This word is making a man sensible and making him wise above all people. It is making him full of understanding. This verse is healing a person. Psalm hundred and seven verse twenty. He sent his word and healed them. Then he sent this word inside, then it will heal your sickness. When he was asked to take his bed and walk, as soon as this verse proceeded, his sickness was healing before he could take his bed. Before, when the Lord said that he is healing you, he was immediately healed. Holding on to that stature, and the Lord said, you rise up and sit, he got up and sat. When he said Lazarus come out, that word made him to come out of the grave. When he says, I will heal you, there is no sickness anymore. At the time of sicknesses, you should seek to this word. At the time of sicknesses, you should seek for the word which will strengthen you. When that word comes out to heal you, the power is also proceeding with it. And he said, he sent his word and healed them. This word should come into him. This word should come and touch your sickness. This word should come into your soul. This word should come into spirit. This word should come and rain every part of your body. If that word comes into you, he will heal. Did you cling on to this verse? Have you got this verse at any time? At the time of sickness, you should only seek for the word of God. If this word comes into you, then he will send this word and heal them. A servant of God will come and pray for you. But seeing when he sends this word, that's a word that will heal you. If he sends one word, it will surely heal him. You are sending your money order to a child which is far off. The man who is sending his money from here, has his son is being eating and drinking and as he is being fed in a far off place, even so the word which is sent from heaven is made able to make us quick and from our resurrected body. He is sending his word and healing them and delivering them from destructions. His word which says that I will preserve you, no harm will come to you. The ship was faltering. It was stuck out in a strong storm. Fourteen days they were not able to see the suns, moon or stars. Fourteen days they did not eat anything. In the midst of this. He got a word saying that you will stand before Caesar. To whom? And to Paul who was in this shipwreck, he got the word that I will make you to stand before Caesar. In the ship that is beginning to sink, he is being promised that he will be made to stand before the Caesar. Then he began to eat. He said, you all sit and eat because I am eating and truly what the Lord has spoken, he will do it and make me stand for Caesar. And the word of God will not lie. Maybe delays occurring. We think if the Lord would have done today, it would be better, but at the right time he is doing it. We are thinking as to why the Lord is not doing today, we are going through a lot of sufferings. For the children, they would like to eat ice creams but you are not. For the children, they would like to eat ice creams, but you are not giving them. Why? Why you didn't give? Because it will catch cold. It will not sleep and it will not allow us to sleep. For the children, they would like to eat ice creams, but you are not giving them. He has all ability to give to you, but he does not give to you because he has his right time to do and at this right time, he is doing his work. He repeated the holy name of the Lord. The word of the Lord tried him. If the word comes into you, this word will start trying you and making you to form. When you are doing mistakes, then it will make you, admonish you and make you to think of it. When you are worried, then this word will deal with you. In the path of distress, which is trying you, his word will say that I am reforming you. This is a word spoken to Joseph. What was the word spoken to him? He was told that the sun, moon and stars will all come and worship you. When Jacob, he heard this, he was full of tension. Because the first dream was different. He thought that when his sheeps were standing up, then all his brethren were bowing down, that he sought his word for children. But the next dream, how it is coming? The sun, moon and the stars are bowing down for him, son and moon are the father and mother. When he said this, he is telling, do you think that I will come and bow down for you? But till the time this came to pass, what was the path he went through? They put him into the pit. They came and gave the garment, saying that it is dirt. They sold them in the place they meant. This point his name there and put him into a chain. But the word of God to speak to him like this. Surely, the sun and moon will come and bow down before you, but the path he was going down is trying. Have you got such a word and are you going through fire like this? Are you going through fiery trials? You should not fear, because if he should tell a word, then definitely it will come to pass. You should never forget it. At that time of his birth, he asked him how he will be. The Lord said that I will make him to ask account of the kings. At the time of his birth, the promise was that I will make him to ask account of the kings. At the time of his birth, in India itself, the kings were all changed. All the kingdoms were changed and the kings were all gone and it was changed into states. But she kept in her mind. Then the son was growing and he learnt and he became big and he joined the company which is Shetia Accounts. He joined in, as a big officer in the government. One day, what happened was. Suddenly, he was sent from Delhi to Tamil Nadu to go and check out the Maharaja Palace in Mysore. The Mysore Maharaja Palace was left just later and all the property was left behind and others were using it, so the government asked him to go and check out about the property. What was spoken by God when it is birth? Does the Lord speak to you when your child was born like this? Does he speak to you? You never think like that. When Rebecca's sons were struggling in her womb, she asked of the Lord what will happen, what will be the end of it, then the Lord said that the younger, eldest, eldest younger. When we go for delivery, we say, we pray for a safe delivery of our operation. One group is praying that they might get a girl child and the other group for a male child. When our child is growing, he should come for the ministry, such mentality is not found in us. Just you think and see what the Lord has dealt with you about your children. The Joseph, the word of God tried him. And that word took him to the throne. The word of God has to keep on trying you and it should always keep speaking to you that he is with you and saving you and in the midst of trials, it will take you to shore. For some of them, there is the word spoken and because of this word, they have a lot of trying, the path is trying them, this is the path given to Joseph. What do you think of this? One son-in-law, he went in a different path. That mother-in-law was very sad. He went with another girl, leaving her daughter. How would it be? She began to kneel down on the salt. Until he comes back, I will kneel down like this and ask as to what your will is. That salt, it just entered into her knees, to that extent, she stood on her knees. The Lord said that I will bring her back and he will flee away from that girl. Only then she rose up from her knees. For some days, she was suffering with that injury in her leg and before that it was healed, that man, that Sanula came back. You should hold on to the word. If there is a problem, then you should ask the word from the Lord. If you go and pray, kneel down and pray for with tears for fifteen minutes and say, praise the Lord and go, then you have no reward in it, but only the word of God can bring you a reward. It will try you, but surely take you to the throne. In Romans fifteen, chapter verse four. This verse is comforting a person and making him more meek. Through the patience and comfort of scriptures. Your word is my delight. If your word was not my joy and my grief, I would have drowned. We see two truths in this word of God here. It is making, giving comfort to the one who is in grief and it is making one more patient. When the Lord is speaking that I will work for you, I will work for you, then if you are keeping on waiting, is the time that the Lord is creating this patience in him and waiting for the time that Lord will work. In the life of Job, the Lord, we see he was long suffering in his life. It caused long suffering to burn his life. James five eleven. The patience of Job made him blessed of the Lord. He was through what, was he waited? He says, my Redeemer lived. Not with other eyes, but my own, I shall see him. Although my skill will alterish, I will in my life see my Redeemer. The Lord spoke a word to Abraham. In Isaac shall thy seed be. Now he is asking to kill his son Isaac. He said that in Isaac shall thy seed be, even now the Lord is asking him to kill him. He knew for sure that the Lord said that in him shall his seed be, therefore he went boldly to kill him. If the Lord should promise a word, then you can boldly go ahead because what he said, he will do. He said that I will exalt you, definitely he will exalt you, but you will have your ten points and you seek for him there, but he will have eleven point for it. The word of God is comforting a person and making him patient. Nextly, with this word, you can overcome devil. Revelation twelve, chapter verse eleven, when you see. Only by this word, you can overcome Satan. When he spoke to Jesus, he spoke with the words and even Jesus with that same word spoke to him. Therefore, when the other people, other church people come and speak to you, they will speak with the words and with the clear words, you should speak to them. Satan did not come with his hair put out, he came through the serpent even so like this, he will come through the church members. Even so, you should very, you should understand very clearly that by the word of God, you can overcome him. The word of God is the sword. Ephesians six sixteen, we see that you should take on the sword which is the word of God. Ephesians six seventeen, we read this verse. You take on to the sword of the spirit which is the word of God, you can slay the devil by this. If you say the right word, Satan will flee. When one place Satan did not go. What I did was. In the Gospel, the places by Jesus cast out demons and devils, they are speaking to him in the word. In the first John, I said that by this word, he overcame Satan and he refused to hear this word itself. You should use the word of God rightly. By this word, you can with one hit hit the devil. Today, we are asking the devil to go and we are asking to please go out. One Satan we chased hundred times. In the name of Jesus, we command to go, but it is still there. Finally, he is saying, please go out. Unless you resist him, if you ask him to, if you plead him, then he will overcome you, if you resist him, he will flee. For in Kerala, they all prayed for deliverance of the devil. All the big pastors prayed and Satan did not go. Finally, Pastor Paul came. He crossed the convention. They brought him to the chief pastor that the devil might go. All of them were watching as to what Pastor Paul is doing and the person is caught by devil. He is not the person who is praying shouting like us. We do not know if we are shouting out by fear, seeing him or by practice, we shout. In the name of Jesus, I command you to go, he just said and he prayed and went out to the next person. They expected him to pray very greatly and that Satan should promise and go, but he very simply prayed and went to the next person. All the people around and the pastors were all fully upset. They thought that the chief pastor also could not put away the devil. He did not even bother about it, he prayed and went out. The person who is possessed by devil says, I have not gone, I am still here. And the chief pastor prayed and when all of them around looking, it would be really shameful and he is telling that I have not gone, I am still there. With great pain, all of them were seeing because the Satan also was accusing. He kept on praying and came. he kept on praying and came after he prayed to all of them and was over this man who is possessed by Satan went to him now you say I go he said now he said you can't make it go I'll go he turned back and said I tell you once and I have already spoken I am a person who believes on the name of the law come on see I have already spoken the word believing on his name the Satan kept on saying once more you tell that word and I will go but he said I believed in the word and spoke once that is the end he stood by that word the command which this said is once and that is what they don't repeat it and that's what has made him great finally that spirit shouted out and cried saying all what I have done is wrong what I spoke is wrong and it just fled away how many trips are you using this word see how many times I am using this word we think as to thousand times we tell this word if it goes it's sufficient we do not know the glory of that word we do not know the life in that word see how they have used the word only one stone not the next stone they overcame him by the blood of the lamb and by the word of their testimony this word is sanctifying a person the word of God which is the truth is sanctifying a person the reason why we are all changed like this is the reason why our characters changed like this is we like this the beginning I was like a beast as a man but by thy counsel you are changing me and you are accepting me in glory that is how we were in the beginning we were like the beasts seventy-three twenty-two we see that I was like a foolish man I was a beast before thee thou shall guide me with thy counsel and afterwards save me to glory this word is sanctifying a man slowly it's changing his character and it is renewing him how many of you need this word his word will not return empty or without word but will accomplish the word which it is sent for if an ordinary rain will rain on the earth and does it work on this earth how much more the word of God will work on us it is an incorruptible seed and it is making us incorruptible it is making us as fast fruits it is saving our soul in the midst of fast situations it is upholding us it is a light unto our path it is a light unto our darkness in the midst of fast sickness this was the seeding us in the midst of tribulations it is trying us and making us and head to the throne although we are fools and simple it is making us not to err from our path it is making us patient and comfort it is making us overcome Satan above all it is making sanctifying us the first man of God says I am waiting for that word he give me that word
omri vasana thikanaan kathirukkare
I hope in thy word for us and let us wait for us to receive such a word from the God Lord you give me a word like this I have got many explanations for thy word even there are many goodness of this word it has changed many saints it has made many miracles in the life of many saints even today your word is performing miracles I am going through many paths I am in my sick bed in the midst of all this on the base of your word I am waiting for your word how many of you need this word although you say I want a word you close your eyes and kneel down Lord you know the path I am going through my husband wife or children or the workers also do not know the path I am going through but you know the path I am going through so give me a word for it I will hold on to your word let that word lead me let that word try me let that word form me let that word make me overcome you give me one verse for my future or for my days to come he has the words which is kept for you that word is given to you at this eight fifty at this night if you receive this word you will never have failure in your life you might have tribulations after this but you had the throne for sure you might have defeated in your path but this will make you holy Lord for such a word I am waiting
amen pala surnalagile enakisela warthigal kuduthirukkara naanadhi petturukkare anda payirchi enakirkenave yurukkara the endu ethanavir solukkari ipuludanda vasana omgulodi edebada anumudikirikala illa vatal katharini goro pudiya warthi omgulki tarattam amen hallelujah amen 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 koodam neraanala mudikkiren anali niggal poi intha iravale enna manthandu prayerukkara arukpinbom niggal todachi aha kathari warthi kaai kathirungai omgulki kuriya warthi kadandu varum amen warthi uddukkundu warthi le pidditukkundu warthi inbadi jeevitu warthigal kaaga tangaer pani kroli seerkai eswari ra porabadi naalastothramanuva adenali kandu ogori tagri padthu muriyai stothramanuva ellama kimiya oru kese liti stothramanuva